We're just making sure mics work. So, but do any of you have any questions?
How much time on the first question?
You can hear me now. She says yes.
Voters, Martha Kuria from Thurston County Media, the NAACP of Thurston County for all helping put this together. And of course, thank you to the candidates and everybody. We just, you know, expect the normal amount of decorum from everybody in this type of thing. So, thank you very much and there's Valley.
Hello, everyone. I'm Valley Needham Heisman. I am co-chair of the Legal Women Voters of Thurston County. I'm co-president and I'm also chair of the Candidate Forums Committee. So, thank you all so much for coming. We do want to thank our partners TC Media, Thurston Community Media, and the NAACP of Thurston County. They're a relatively new group. And also the Timberland Library for hosting us. We are so thankful for their help and this could not happen without all of them. So, also thank you to the candidates for being here. This is a unique opportunity for you guys to ask your questions of the candidates and the candidates to answer. And so, this is a very important part of democracy and making sure that you're educated as you go to the ballot box. Well, as you fill out the ballot on your kitchen table as we are in Washington State. So, if you look at the pamphlet that you were given, it'll tell you kind of the format on one side. And the other side kind of explains how to craft a good question. And so, if you kind of have, you're not sure how to write your question, there's some tips right there. We do ask that you ask one question per note card. So, you can ask multiple questions and absolutely give them to our greeters. But just one question per note card. So, if you need another one, you can just raise your hand. You can continue to offer questions throughout the event. When you're ready, just go ahead and raise your note card in the air. And we have volunteers who will come and grab them for you. We do ask that all questions be addressed to both candidates. Please do not single out one candidate. Make sure that they're relevant to the position. So, you know, we're not going to be asking like questions about like insurance and stuff like that. That may be more appropriate for the Insurance Commissioner or something like that. So, make sure that's tailored to the school board. Make sure that they're neutrally worded, you know, so don't be kind of asking it in such a way that you're trying to maybe trap the candidates or anything like that. And candidates, you have received the ground rules for the forum in an email. And by being here, you do agree to abide by those rules. As Blake said, we do expect respectfulness and allowing the candidates to speak. And other than that, I will go ahead and introduce our moderator. Our moderator is Nicole Miller. She is the Chair of our Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Belonging Committee. And she will be moderating this forum. And so, let's give it over to Nicole.
Thank you. So, tonight we are joined by Sarah Tracy and Loretta Burns running for District Three. Jeremy Ryan and Tim Bullis from District Two were unable to join us this evening, but both submitted a statement that I'll read at the end of the program. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, I'm loud. Also, I want to make sure I'm using the mic. So, according to the website, the North Thurston Public School Board of Directors is the primary policymaking body for the district. Using a policy governance model, the board establishes the district's vision and goals. They hold the superintendent accountable for achieving the goals. They adopt and monitor the annual district budget. They hire and evaluate the superintendent and participate in events and activities to ensure community voice is part of the decision-making process. As we turn to the questions, we ask the audience to hold all applause until the end of the forum to ensure we can get through as many questions as possible. We will start off this afternoon by asking each candidate why they are running for North Thurston School Board and what their goals and priorities are. We'll start with Sarah Tracy.
Thank you so much. My name is Sarah Tracy. I'm a lifelong member of the North Thurston Public Schools community. First as a K through 12 student and graduate and the daughter of a longtime teacher. Then as the parent of two recent River Ridge High School graduates and an active school volunteer. And now, as the current School Board Director for District Three. I've been deeply connected with our district for over 45 years. I was appointed over a year ago and have thoroughly enjoyed this past year. I am passionate about education, about our district specifically, and about our students. And making sure that we are providing them a high caliber education and setting them up for success, for fulfilling careers, and to be compassionate global citizens. I've worked hard over the past year and I'm just getting started. And it's really an honor to represent our community. And it's a responsibility I don't take lightly and look forward to continuing to serve.
We're just going to pause just a minute while she gets mic'd up so everybody can hear.
Are you going to repeat the question or?
Yes, absolutely. Let me find it. We will start off this evening by asking each candidate why are they running for North Thurston School Board and what their goals and priorities are.
So, my name is Loretta Burns and I'm running for School Board because I believe that educating our children is the most important thing that we do as a society. I myself came from a broken home, changed elementary schools over seven times. And so, I know how important it is for children to have a safe learning environment, safe and engaging. I ultimately moved up and graduated from North Thurston High School. And I've actually been concerned about the quality of education since way back then. My son went to Olympia School District and I volunteered in his schools to help kids read because less than half the kids can read at grade level and it affects the whole classroom. And I started going to School Board meetings, well, since then, I also got married. And I now have a blended family of eight adult children and 10 grandchildren, all under the ages of 10. And so, I'm very familiar with our educational system. I started going to School Board meetings 10 years ago, reading all the reports, reading the data, reading the school policies. And I even organized a forum with the two senators of the co-chairs of the Education Committee at that time when they were dealing with McCleary. So, I was following McCleary and following funding. Since that time, in the last 10 years, we've actually doubled our per pupil amount of money for education. We went from $9,000 to $18,000 a year per student. And yet, performance has not improved at all. In fact, I looked at the data from 2017 and from this last year and it's actually declined. So, you cannot just blame that on COVID. And even Rektal in his, in his recent conference stated that we have gotten distracted from academics. And it was interesting that he acknowledged that. So, I'm running for School Board because we need people on the board who understand the policies that have brought us here and how to make things better. Not just try new things, but to actually make things better.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we're just going to get into it because these are some really good questions. I was trying to like maybe ease in, but they're all just great questions. And so, we're just going to jump right in. And Valley, do we go in the same order or do we alternate who goes first? Okay, okay. So, Loretta, you will go first and you will have a second. So, the first question is, what should our schools do to protect the rights of all students regarding their varying gender identities?
Well, that's an interesting question because I think they are, at this time, protecting students' rights. And there's a lot of support for LGBTQ and for trans students. I've talked to parents, you know, who their children have come home and talked about the clubs in middle school. And so, unless there's a particular issue where somebody is known, somebody is aware of something's going on, then it's hard to know what else more we can do to protect their rights.
Would you repeat the question?
Yes. What should our schools do to protect the rights of all students regarding their varying gender identities?
I think it's incredibly important that we protect everyone's rights. And gender identity has become a really hot topic recently. I think that we're doing, we're doing what's necessary as far as following state law. And also, doing many things to advocate for our transgender students as far as P flag opportunities in the schools, the clubs in the schools. And I think it's important that we continue to advocate for their rights while also making sure that we don't diminish the rights of any other students.
Thank you. So, the next question, and we'll start with you, Sarah. The next question is, do you think that schools should work with area tribes to include tribal history and culture?
I think it's incredibly important that we work with our local tribes. And it's one of the many things that I'm really proud of the work that our district has done in partnering with the Nisqually Tribe. From, you know, joint meetings with the School Board and the Tribal Council to the education opportunities for Native American US history and English and studying our core education through that lens for those students. And I think that's something that helps them feel engaged and included in our schools.
Thank you. Same question for you.
Yeah, that's an interesting question because I've gone to many of the School Board meetings that where we have met with the Nisqually Tribe. It's actually one of the few board meetings where people are able to talk with the board members. There's an actual discussion there. And, and there is, and they have talked about a kind of, I forget the name of it, but a curriculum that has been developed and that is available in the, in the school district system. But they never really talked specifically about where that's incorporated, whether it's in a normal American history course. And one of the things that I've seen over the years is everybody has a million of great ideas of everything we can teach kids. You know, we need to teach civics, we need to teach, make sure they have dual language. We have to have CTE. Then you have to have, you know, native history and culture. And it becomes a lot. It's a lot for the teachers to handle. Obviously, when we're teaching history, that history needs to be taught, you know, objectively, but inclusive of different perspectives. And hopefully, that curriculum, maybe it's incorporated into Washington State history. I'm not sure. But I'm hoping that, you know, that's where it is being taught because I know there is a curriculum.
Thank you. Okay. This question is for you, Loretta, first. Do you agree with the President that DEI efforts should be abandoned?
Well, that's, that's a pretty broad stroke and statement. So, the whole, the concept in general, of course not. You know, we need to always keep in mind diversity and equity and inclusion. And to be honest, I'm, I'm not sure. I do think it has gone too far in some circumstances. For example, my retirement plan and my mutual, I'm more, it's more important to me that my retirement investments make money rather than if they're decided based on social equity. But, so it kind of depends on what, what stroke of the pen he's particularly talking about.
Thank you.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Absolutely not. I mean, I don't mind.
You couldn't win there.
Do you agree with the President that DEI efforts should be abandoned?
I do not agree that DEI efforts should be abandoned. And specifically looking at the education realm, I think that our diversity of personality, experiences, identities is part of what makes our culture and our community so rich. I think it's really important that all of our students feel included in our schools and that we're providing equitable opportunities so that every student can be successful. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with you, Sarah. Curriculum for science, fact-based or faith-based? That's the question.
Funny. As a scientist, a pharmacist by training, fact-based science curriculum is incredibly important to me. I'll leave it at that.
I would kind of really have to understand why anybody is even asking that question. Because there's, you know, we have like five sons that are engineers. I studied agriculture and biology. And even over the last 50 years, the whole idea of faith coming into our science curriculum is just, I've never even heard of it as an issue, but.
Okay, so the next question is also, well, I don't know. It's a short one. We'll start with you, Loretta. Vaccines for students, question mark.
Well, you know, that's, I love the vaccines. You know, my sister had polio before the polio vaccine. My brother had measles before the measles vaccine. I had mumps and chickenpox before those vaccines. And I, I actually believe there's some very, that most vaccines are very important. I've lived in developing countries. I've known people, one of my best friends in Bangladesh had smallpox, a terrible disease. And so, yes, I support vaccines, but sometimes I think we're going to, there are things that I think parents need to be more informed and have a choice. And, and it's concerning when people are talking about, for example, the COVID vaccine as one side is fact-based and one is, doesn't believe in science. The science behind some vaccines is actually quite complicated. And, and so, people need choice. I think we're getting into more and more vaccines, like Hep B. Why does your average four-year-old need Hep B? I've had Hep V vaccines because I lived in some of the most dangerous countries in the world, but anyways.
Thank you. Same question. Vaccines for students, question mark.
All right. Again, with my pharmacist background and medical background, I certainly have a great understanding of the importance of vaccines for protecting individuals as well as communities. It's important to help protect those patients who can't receive vaccines for various immunocompromised reasons. So, I do think that vaccines are important in schools. We do have policies for exemptions. And I do, I do also agree that, you know, parents should have a right to decide about especially voluntary vaccines, the non-required vaccines. But there are certain required vaccines that I think are very important to maintain the health of our community and our education system.
Thank you. I believe we're starting with you this time, Sarah. How do you plan to handle book challenges slash bans by groups of people?
As far as book challenges and bans, I think it is incredibly important that all of our community has access to the wealth of information that's available in our libraries, in our school libraries, in our public libraries. And that it's, it's really important that access is not limited through book bans. I do think it's important, especially in our education system, that parents have the opportunity to express concerns. And I think it's important that the books are available, you know, at the elementary level, are appropriate for elementary-age students and so on. And that there is a process for families to express concern or have a child stay out of a lesson if, if they're opposed for, you know, religious reasons or that sort of thing.
Are there the same question?
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting. In the last few years, as far as I know, this has never been brought up in the North Thurston School District unless it's been at the school level. I'm actually more concerned on the other side. I, I'm concerned that the school district actually doesn't involve the community or parents in terms of new curriculum adoption. When I was up in Kitsap County and there was a new curriculum for like history, they would make the whole curriculum, all the books available to the school district, send out an email and say, hey, would you like to see what we're teaching? Come and see it. This school district kind of goes out of its way to not make any information available. And even though they say members of the community can be on the curriculum review, And even though they say members of the community can be on the curriculum review, they actually are not. And they very rarely meet, and they don't actually share the curriculum, as far as I can tell so far, even with the school board. And so, I think it's important, you know, a lot of parents, when Common Core happened, a lot of parents were like, whoa, I can't teach my kids this math. And I think it's important for them to know. Maybe that's not a book ban issue, but I think parents need to have more information.
So, on the topic of curriculum, we have another question. This is for you, Loretta, and it's on history. History is the topic now. I feel like I'm on Jeopardy! a little bit. On history, where do you stand in terms of teaching an inclusive history or not teaching topics such as, or erasing topics such as mentions of slavery, the Holocaust, civil rights struggles, and other DEI topics?
Well, I find this so interesting because being an older person, born in 1960, and I grew up, I mean, I kind of grew up in California with the impression that pretty much we had killed every single Indian in the United States or Native American, you know? I mean, we learned about all that stuff, we learned about that as kids. We learned about the history of the Native Americans in the area that we lived. We learned about that in Washington state history. We learned about taking land from Native Americans and how we affected them. We also learned about slavery. And we learned about how our country, you know, the people in our country, how we fought against slavery. And so, I don't know if something crazy happened where somewhere in the middle of the last 20 years, we eliminated that part of history? But as far as I know, we've always taught those things. I mean, I, I don't know how many of you watch Roots. I mean, I just, that impacted me. And one of the reasons why, you know, I actually went and lived in Africa. But so, I don't, show me the history book where we're not teaching that, please.
And same question. It is, it's worded a little funny, so I'm going to try to get it the same way that I did. But on history, where do you stand in terms of teaching inclusive history or not teaching topics and erasing the mention of slavery, the Holocaust, civil rights struggles, and other DEI topics?
That's a great question. And looking specifically at inclusive history versus removing some of those topics, I think it's incredibly important that we include that. I think those who aren't aware of history are bound to repeat it. And so, we want to make sure that we are giving our students a full perspective of history and what has happened and what we can do to not repeat those mistakes in the future.
Setting aside the concept of school choice, how would, what would you tell the North Thurston Public Schools superintendent to do to stem the apparent exodus from public schools?
You know, I think it's really important that we maintain our enrollment because that's how our public education is funded. I think that we've done some really remarkable things over the past few years to help improve that as far as Summit Virtual Academy and giving families the opportunity for virtual learning when they weren't comfortable being in person during COVID. And many students found that that was a better fit for them, and they've been able to continue that. Having the opportunity for homeschool connect through the Ignite Family Academy, as well as choice schools such as Aspire Performing Arts for Middle School and Envision Career Academy. And so, I think it's important that we continue to offer opportunities that help the non-traditional student feel comfortable and confident in receiving their education.
Okay. So, same question?
I think they've finally gotten to the point that when kids leave the district, they're actually starting to ask parents why they're leaving and doing surveys. And if they're not doing that, they should be doing that, and they should ask the parents and the kids why they're leaving. They should also look at the data that they have and listen. They have these community conversations, and it's interesting when they bring in students and they say things, little tidbits. And one of the things they said is, one of the reasons a lot of kids are not showing up to their classes in high school is that everything's online anyways. And so, they're not really engaged with a teacher in high school, so why not just stay at home and do their work in bed, you know? And so, you have to listen when kids are saying that. We also hear on the, I think it's Parents of North Thurston on Facebook, they go on and on about the bullying that's going on in the middle schools and how they're afraid to use the bathrooms. Why isn't anybody talking about that? We're talking about why we have a high rate of absenteeism, kids just not showing up. They do whole community conversations on that, but they don't actually look at the data about when and why they're not showing up. And they don't, even when they collect a lot of information from people, they don't actually analyze it, the school board doesn't, to respond to that. Sorry.
Thank you for your answer. I appreciate it. We have, sorry, I got off topic on, I mean, out of order on the questions. Given the, North Thurston School District has a very diverse student population. How can the school board encourage efforts in equity and inclusion?
Does that mean first?
Yep.
Again, you know, when people keep asking about equity and inclusion, it would be helpful if you could describe, what is the particular issue that you think is there? You know, I actually read for state legislature a couple of years ago and doorballed 10,000 doors, and I'd be out and about and seeing kids playing of all different, you know, colors. And they're just kids. I mean, kids are normally pretty outgoing and interact with each other. And so, and, but I also talk to parents where there is a lot of emphasis on the racial issues, and some kids were feeling less comfortable of that, that they were being labeled as racist because they were white. And so, I think you have to be careful about this. And at one of the school board meetings, there was actually one of the teachers, a black woman, and she talked about how she felt that racism within the school and racist comments are actually increasing over the last couple of years. So, I think we have to be careful about what we do so we don't make things worse.
Thank you. Same question, would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
North Thurston School District has a very diverse student population. How can the school board encourage efforts in equity and inclusion?
I think the school board emphasizes efforts for equity and inclusion through many of the programs that we support throughout the district, such as the diverse course offerings, Native Perspectives, US History, English and Civics, an African-American heritage course, a Hispanic heritage course, the numerous clubs that are available. I think our diversity is part of what makes our community so rich, and I think it's really important that we continue to support those efforts so that our, all of our students feel safe and welcome.
Thank you. All right. Given the gap between the proportion of students of color and the proportion of teachers of color, how would you suggest the district go about increasing the recruitment and retention of teachers of color? This is for you first.
I just realized that. I think that it's really important that we have education faculty and staff that are reflective of our community and that it's important that we do things to advocate for that. So, going to recruitment events specifically focused on diverse educators and recruiting diverse educators, I think is one thing we can do. Also, several of the things we're doing within our own community as far as teacher academies in the high schools, so encouraging our students to become educators. What better place to get a representative of our community than someone from our community, as well as the opportunities for paraeducators to go on and get teacher training? So, pulling from our own community to continue to support that diversity.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, this is an interesting question because about 15% of our student population is Hispanic, which could include Venezuelans, Guatemalans, Mexicans. I don't know that they all see themselves as a homogeneous group. We have about 7% to 8% of the population is black. I don't know if that's including, I've met a lot of people from Nigeria, Ghana, you know? And then, there's people that moved from Memphis or the military and Black Americans. Do they also consider themselves as a homogeneous group? It's hard to say. I know that we have one of the staff member, I forgot his name, and he said when they're trying to increase diversity, they're having a hard time to get, from getting Black teachers to move here from Tacoma. I don't know what you do about that. I do think it's concerning that our state passed a law that elementary school teachers do not have to have qualif, minimal qualifications in math. And they passed that because they want to increase the diversity in the teacher population. And so, the idea is that if they don't have that criteria, you might bring in more teachers of color. It's a true policy. I didn't make that up. It was, and, and that's not, that's not not being racist, you know? And so.
I'm going to ask you to, just, I'm really going to encourage you to stick to the timeframe. Thank you.
There you go.
And I appreciate it. It's all good information, but we need to stick to the rules. Starting with you, would you look at starting high school at a later time as research helps them come to school?
Starting with me?
It starts with you again.
Well, I have to admit, I actually don't know what time high school starts. That's your confession.
7:30.
What time?
7:30.
7:30. You know, schools are about logistics and buses and fitting things in, so it's a complicated decision. I know when I was at North Thurston, I started school at 7:15. I happen to love that. And I know a lot of other high schools have changed it to like 9 o'clock. You know, I know they're having a fight in Seattle because they want to split the lunch, but again, there's logistics about how you meet the needs of the kids. I think if they're looking into it and they can start it at 8 or a little bit later, that would be reasonable if it's better for them. But again, you have to look at the whole financial and logistical picture of schools, and we're short on, we have a shortage of school buses, school drivers, so.
Thank you.
I did it.
And Sarah, what about you? Would you look at starting high school at a later time, given the research helps, the research says that that helps them come to school?
I mean, there's no debating the research that shows that our adolescents need more sleep and that their circadian rhythm is not the same as our traditional high school schedule. So, it's actually something that I was just recently talking about with Superintendent Oliver because of, because of that issue. And when I've been out talking to families, that is one of the concerns that has been raised is the early start time for high school, especially because we shifted the middle school time later to accommodate our early adolescents. So, they start at 9:30, and so then, that's a big jump to start at 7:30 for the high schools. So, it's certainly something worth examining, but as Loretta already mentioned, comes with a lot of challenges as far as busing, schedules, childcare, and meeting the needs of all of our families and students.
Thank you. Hey, starting with you, Sarah. If you had a magic wand that could cut one program or mandate from the North Thurston School District, what would it be?
A magic wand to cut one program or mandate?
It really says magic sword, but I'm a social worker and we use the magic wand question a lot, so I changed it. It's less violent, but yes.
I honestly can't think of any program or mandate that I would cut. I'm really proud of the services that our district offers as we face the financial and budgetary constraints that are coming. One of the principles that I think is really important is rather than cutting programs that maybe we, and completely eliminating them, that we cut back, that maybe we reduce the services that are being provided because it's much easier when funding rebounds, which I'm hopeful that it will, to regrow those programs versus if they're eliminated and then it's much more difficult to restart them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't think of a particular program, especially when you use the word mandate, because a lot of the programs are, you know, the students aren't mandated to participate in these different programs. They're there to meet a variety of needs. So, yeah, I, I don't, if I had a magic wand, I'd use it for other things.
Okay. This one starts with you. What do you think are the main challenges facing the school board, and how do you propose addressing them?
You know, it's an interesting question. People ask about what the challenges that face the school board or face the school district. I'm actually concerned about the fact that less than half of our kids can read at grade level, and they're doing even worse in math. And this has been something that's been going on for over 10 years. That should be the challenge for the school board, is to figure out why that is and to fix it. But they actually don't really bring it up. And if that, and I'm sure that's one reason why more people are leaving public education, you know, if they feel their kids are spending too much time on other things but not learning to read. If you don't learn to read in, by fifth grade and you're moved into middle school, you're not going to catch up, and you're not going to learn science, and you're not going to learn math, and you're not going to learn history. And you're not going to feel good about yourself. You're not going to have the kind of self-esteem, and I think that should be the priority.
Main challenges facing the school board, and how do you propose addressing them?
All right. I think two of the main challenges facing the school board and our district. One is attendance, and so, finding ways to engage students, making them feel welcome in our schools, having them have at least one person that they connect with so that they feel a part of the community, and that there are classes and activities that make them want to come to school. I think are all strategies that can help with that. The other thing is the educational achievement. I think between recovering from the pandemic as well as digital distractions, that's had a huge impact on our educational achievement. The currently memorandum of understanding, but hopefully soon-to-be policy regarding not having cell phones in school, I think will be another big benefit in helping to raise our academic achievement. Just last night, we heard that we are at least seeing improvements in those sixth-grade scores.
Thank you. What is your opinion of the board's role versus parents' role in the decision regarding curriculum and textbooks? It starts with you, Sarah.
All right. The board's role versus parents' role for curriculum and textbooks? I think it is, you know, in our district, as a policy governance district, our role is to direct the school administration to find a curriculum that supports our student achievement. I think it's really important that we're aware of what that curriculum is and what the benefits will be for our students and how we're going to implement it. As far as parents, I think it's important that they have a role in reviewing materials and expressing concerns. And also, the parent's role in supporting their students in working through that curriculum so that they can have support not only at school but at home as well in achieving their academic goals.
Can you just say that again?
Yep, absolutely. What is your opinion of the board's role versus parents' role in the decisions regarding curriculum and textbooks?
Well, I think obviously it's more the responsibility of the board and the school district. I mean, you have 30, what, basically 30,000 parents that could be complicated in picking curriculum. But I think the board needs to, this board, this school district, I think, needs to be more involved than they have been. I was surprised when they had a community conversations a couple, a year or so ago on the ELA curriculum, and they didn't really talk about any of the details of the ELA curriculum. But it surprised me that they had a five-year plan for actually picking out the curriculum. And it was interesting how the person in charge of that presented it, and I thought, why would it take you five years? And so, right now, I see that the board actually has very little role in the curriculum process, and I think they need to have more. We need to make sure that that curriculum is designed. I personally believe in phonics, and it will act. I personally believe in phonics, and it will actually help children learn to read, and it should not take five years.
Thank you. Okay. In our remaining time, Sarah and Loretta, you both have the opportunity to give a one-minute closing statement, starting with, actually, who opened first? Do you remember? It's only been 45 minutes, but... Do we remember who opened first? Sarah. Okay, so let's have you close first, Loretta.
Okay, and I've got one minute, huh?
Two minutes?
Oh, two minutes. She said we get two minutes.
Two minutes, we'll start the timer over for you. Hold on just a second.
Well, yeah, thank you, and thank you, since I have a full two minutes. Oh, you're going to start over again? Good. Thanks to the League for doing this. I really love these candidate forums, and we don't actually have a lot of opportunities. And thanks to those of you who come, and I'm glad that they're now in person. And like I said, and I think you probably all believe it, is there anything more important than education, is educating our children? That's our responsibility. It's in our, it's in our state constitution as our foremost responsibility. And I have cared about this issue for a long time. I'm running because we need people, we need a diversity of thought on our school board. We need people that can ask more questions to very complex issues and to look at the policies. We need, as an economist, we need people that understand the budgets and the implication of budgets, and that can understand the data that comes out in the analysis of how our kids are doing. And it's, okay, and so that's why I'm running. And I've seen on this board, I would like more transparency and greater communication between the board and the community, between the school district and the community. I've asked a couple of times, I've been in numerous school districts, and I was up, used to live in Kitsap County, and they would send out an email, a regular email, to the community, letting people know if there was new curriculum coming out, whether there were events, whether there, and they would actually hold candidate forums when there were new candidates running. And so I think this district needs to do more of that. It was surprising to me that when I first started going to meetings, you have a consent agenda and approval agenda, and most of the time, they would not discuss anything that was up for approval. And that's the responsibility of the board, is to read all this information, look at these policies, ask the questions, and increase transparency and communication. I would like to hear more from teachers.
Thank you. You have two minutes, Sarah.
All right. I'm incredibly proud of our district. I'm proud of the diversity within our schools. I'm proud of the strength of our community and the unique programs and partnerships that we've developed. And while we continue to foster all of those, I think it's also really important that we commit and recommit to restoring and exceeding high levels of academic rigor so that all of our students are challenged, empowered, equipped for success. I've spent the past year diving into all things with school board as far as learning about how boards work and how we achieve our mission through a policy governance perspective, and I'm really excited to continue that work. I'm committed to listening, to learning with an open mind, and ensure that I'm representing our community as a compassionate, thoughtful, and intentional leader, and I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Ryan expresses his regret that he was unable to join us this afternoon, and he submitted the following statement. Now imagine me as Jeremy, because I don't know what he looks like, but... "I am a dedicated lifelong learner and an experienced educator with a deep commitment to student success. With over a decade of experience as a special education administrator and teacher, I have a proven record of crafting individualized learning plans, managing school budgets, and leading professional development for staff. My philosophy is rooted in empathy, curiosity, and community. I believe every child is capable of greatness, and that this potential is best fulfilled through a supportive network of professionals who are passionate about their growth. My background in special education has equipped me with a unique understanding of the diverse needs of students and the importance of collaborative, innovative approaches to education. As a member of the North Thurston School Board, I will advocate for transparent communication, fiscal responsibility, and student-centered policies. I will work to ensure that every student has the tools and support they need to succeed, and that our educators are empowered to provide the highest quality of instruction. I am ready to serve our community and help shape a brighter future for our schools." Tim Bolus was also not able to be here and join us, but he submitted the following statement. So now, pretend I'm Tim.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this important forum. I regret that I cannot be with you in person today, but I want to share why I'm running for North Thurston School Board District 2. I bring experience as both a classroom teacher and as a national education leader. I have taught in some of the toughest schools, working directly with students and families to raise achievement and open new opportunities. More recently, I've served as an executive at an education technology company partnering with state leaders across the country to design career and technical education programs aligned to industry needs. This combination of local classroom experience and national perspective has shaped my belief that schools can and do, can and must do more to prepare every student for success. My first priority is ensuring that students graduate career-ready. This means strengthening and expanding industry-aligned career and technical education programs that open doors to high wages, high-wage, high-demand jobs while keeping students on track for college opportunities. When we give students real pathways connected to the workforce, we build both confidence and community strength. Second, I believe in raising the bar for both academics and behavior. We need to focus on the basics, reading, writing, math, while avoiding distractions that take away, that take attention away from learning. Teachers should not spend their energy managing disruptions from a small number of students, but instead feel empowered and supported to hold high expectations for all. I am equally committed to ensuring that all students are challenged, whether they need extra support to meet grade-level standards or advanced opportunities to stretch their learning. Gifted students deserve as much intentional attention as struggling students. Finally, we need to be smart with our resources. North Thurston has a top-heavy administrative office, and any necessary budget cut should begin there, not with student-facing positions. Dollars must stay closest to the classroom, where they have the greatest impact. Thank you for your time and your consideration." Now, I am Nicole again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. We encourage you to be a voter in the upcoming election on November 4th. Every vote counts. Ballots will be mailed out around October 15th, and you may register to vote up until Election Day. The League of Women Voters of Thurston County is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that encourages all citizens to be informed, active participants in government. The League works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Our sincere thanks go to TC Media for their partnership in producing this forum, and also for years of collaboration with the League. You are so rad. We are grateful to the Timberland Library, our host for the series of candidate forums for local offices that significantly influence the way our community works. You are also rad, I turned in my library books today. Thank you to the NAACP for their sponsorship as we work towards a community, state, and nation where equity and equality for all become the foundation for a strong, vibrant democracy. Thank you so much, the NAACP. Books are here. Thank you to Sarah and Loretta for taking time out of your busy day this afternoon to come talk with us. Thank you, Jeremy and Tim, for submitting statements that I got to read. We believe when candidates make themselves available to the public, it promotes a healthy democracy here in Thurston County. We also want to thank all of the volunteers who are here today, and all of you participating, both in-person and online. Thank you so much. We could not have pulled this off without all of you being here, so I appreciate it.
All right. Were people watching this online, or they're just, oh, okay, interesting?
And it will also be, as you know, like posted on the Lees website.
Right, right, okay.
So that people can...
Share it?
Yeah.
Share it. 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 Share it.